Yeah, we're showing man. Pistol therapy actually works.
Martin, are we ready to go?
We are ready, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, I will call the June third, two thousand twenty-five regular meeting of the Mill Creek City Council to order will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Would Councilmember Cavallari please lead us?
My pledging to the five of the United States of America and to the Republic for which is theirs, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Leah, roll call, please.
Mayor Holtzclaw.
Here.
Mayor Protem Danielle.
Here.
Councilmember Cavallari.
Here.
Councilmember Steckler.
Here.
Councilmember Allison.
Here.
Councilmember Duque.
Here.
Councilmember Paddock.
Present.
Hey, it brings us to audience communication. Would anyone like to address the council on an item that's on the agenda or not on the agenda? Yeah, please. Name and would you like to identify your city of residence?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Uh, my name is Selena Oba, and I'm here tonight as a proud Mill Creek resident. So I'm also a board member of Mill Creek Pride, and most personally, as a lesbian mom raising my child here in this community with my wife. So tonight is really a special milestone. Um, it's the first time that Mill Creek Pride has ever stood before the city council. And I'm here with my child and my mother-in-law and other representatives of Mill Creek Pride because I want them to witness this milestone. Um, where our city publicly says you are seen, you are valued, you belong, and you are part of this community. Uh, Mill Creek Pride was created to lift up and celebrate our LGBTQIA plus neighbors, families, and youth to show we all have a place here. We are your neighbors, we are parents at the schools, and we are part of the beautiful fabric of Mill Creek. This pride proclamation tonight is an important step, and we are so grateful for the city for making it. But we know the work doesn't stop here, so we are excited to invite all of you, council members, city staff, neighbors, to join us for the first ever Mill Creek Pride picnic on June fourteenth. Um, it's gonna be at a hundred and sixty-fourth and North Road. This is gonna be a free, family-friendly celebration of joy and inclusion right here. We're also looking for volunteers, so to spread the word that we'd love for folks to sign up at millcreekpride.org um, to make this event a success. I just wanna thank you for making space for us tonight. Together, we can keep building a Mill Creek where every family, every neighbor, and every kid knows that they are safe, welcome, and celebrated. Not just during Pride Month, but all year long. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in chambers like to address council? Seen, no one, anyone online? I don't see anyone online, so there'll be another opportunity at the end of the meeting. That brings us to our presentations, the first of which is the proclamation in honor of Pride Month. This is a proclamation of the city of Mill Creek. Whereas equality of opportunity and freedom from discrimination are among the basic inalienable moral rights of every person necessary for the development and exercise of our most vital capacities and preconditions of human flourishing. And whereas our nation was founded upon and is guided by a set of principles that includes that every person has been created equal, that each person has rights of to life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness, and that each shall be accorded the full rec- recognition and protection of law. And whereas over the course of our nation's history, the sphere of its moral recognition has expanded to include many persons previously marginalized, disenfranchised, and subjugated, yet this recognition remains imperfect and this expansion incomplete. And whereas two thousand fifteen's landmark Supreme Court decision guaranteeing marriage equality in all fifty states was a historic victory for LGBT Americans, ensuring dignity for same-sex couples and greater equality across state lines. Whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ plus Pride Month is observed annually in the month of June to honor the nineteen sixty-nine Stonewall uprising and to recognize the impact that lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender individuals have had on our history locally, nationally, and internationally. And whereas June has become a symbolic month in which LGBTQ plus community and allies come together in various celebrations of pride. And now therefore, I, Brian Holtzclaw, the mayor of the city of Mill Creek, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim June two thousand twenty-five as lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender Pride Month. Signed this third day of June two thousand twenty-five. Thank you for coming tonight. Okay, our next presentation, Director Todd, uh, support for Snohomish County application for regional growth centers at Ashway and Mariner.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council. I'm standing in for Jeff tonight because he couldn't be here, but I think this is something you've heard me talk about a long time ago. Um, so thank you for bringing the presentation up, and here we go. So the goal for tonight, this presentation, no ex- no expectation of action tonight, but this is gonna be something you're gonna be dealing with in the future. So these are Jeff's slides, but I think I I can carry it through and ask me questions along the way if you don't understand. The agenda tonight is to understand how Snohomish County and the cities here are gonna look at making regional growth centers at both Ashway and Mariner Park and Ride. Uh, light rail stations that come out of the future. So we're gonna kinda talk about the background, the whole planning framework, uh, the alignment of policies, and some next steps. Regional Planning one-on-one, you've heard this before from me, uh, and you've heard it from Jeff. Really what we will look at from a regional standpoint, a lot of the federal programs that bring money to the Pacific Northwest and to our state and to our Puget Sound area come through the Puget Sound Regional Council, which is our metropolitan planning organization. So the federal grant money from FHWA, FTA, comes down and gets allocated through our MPO here. Because they manage that regional planning and they distribute those funds, it's an important thing for us to look at how our local projects are funded by those, and so we wanna make sure we're lined up for those funds when available. Can I do something to get that out of the way? If I do that, does that help? Yes. So Puget Sound Regional Council is our MPO, as we call it, our metropolitan planning organization, Pierce, King, Snohomish, and Kitsap Counties. We've talked about them a lot in the last year because they're responsible for the Growth Management Act and how we implement certain comprehensive plans, and Jeff has talked quite a bit about that. But they also, you remember back a few years ago, we talked about Vision twenty fifty was enacted, and this, what we're gonna talk about tonight with respect to regional centers is part of that whole Vision twenty fifty that was adopted in twenty twenty, I believe, or twenty nineteen at the PSRC, uh, and again, it distributes our federal monies. So what are the regional, regional growth centers? So PSRC at this point has designated thirty regional growth centers and ten manufacturing industrial centers. That map is kinda tiny, but it's in your packet as well as well. I gotta zoom in here in a minute. But they're really targeted for the the dense growth and development. The idea is if you're gonna make investments in infrastructure, particularly transportation, this transportation money coming from Washington DC, you wanna make sure you do an efficient job of how you plan. So these regional growth centers was an idea that was really came through the Vision twenty fifty process to not look at just big cities and medium-sized cities, but also look at where would you have other industrial or growth opportunities to focus growth and therefore focus your investments. So PSRC uses them to rank and fund infrastructure mobility projects, so it's important for us in Snohomish County and us in Mill Creek to figure out how we kind of play into this network of regional growth centers. As I said, it used to be before PSRC's Vision twenty fifty, there was metro like Everett, Bellevue, Seattle, Tacoma, and they had urban, which is medium-sized cities like Linwood, uh, other cities, you know, the the Redmans in the world. Bothell Canyon Park got added into this in the last couple of years. Peenfield Boeing has always been an employment industrial center. They've talked about that. Of course, it's a big job growth area, but it wasn't targeted for dense growth in terms of residential, but it was recognized as an employment center. Well, the thing that got added for us in Snohomish County was the Cascade Manufacturing Industrial Center, the Cascade Mick, or we used to call it the Arlington Marysville Mick when this first was being done. So that was a big deal back in twenty twenty when they adopted regional growth centers, that Snohomish County got to add in both the Cascade Manufacturing Industrial Center and also the Bothell Canyon Park as places that would focus growth. So before four, five years ago, we had three in Snohomish County, King County had like twenty, Pierce County had like five. And so this was a a step forward for us in Snohomish County to get some of that money to come more towards Snohomish County and help us with our projects. So the reason we're talking about it now is planning for light rail. So light rail is gonna have stations at Mariner and at Ashway. Snohomish County, in their comprehensive planning process, created what they call light rail communities, and so they're focusing growth around those light rail stations. And light rail is a big investment of federal transportation dollars, and so it's all lines up. The way you wanna do is kind of look at those as are the opportunities for growth and putting the growth and intensity of activity there. So those are those new light rail community zones are proposed for this growth activity. Kinda zooming in, this is, so you see Mill Creek over on the right, the blue area is our Muga. Up above it is Everett with the city line, and then the purple, kinda purplish area, gray purplish area is their Muga. Over to the left side is Linwood and their Muga. The overlap area is the green hashed, the gray, what the, what is it, pink with pink lines, that's the unclaimed area, and Muckelteal's over the left. But you can see that those two stations um, he, uh, at Ashway and Mc- and uh, and Mariner are gonna be part of this urban growth, are part of our urban growth area, but fit into that regional growth stra- strategy idea.
Mike?
Yeah, go ahead.
It's interesting that they call it the Linwood Center since it's in neither, it's in neither Linwood nor Mill Creek. It's not in, in Linwood proper, it's in their municipal urban growth area, is it? Isn't it?
Run that by me again, the Linwood.
The Linwood, what are we calling these? The Linwood, uh?
Did I say, did I misspeak?
No, no, if you go back to, go back to the PSRC map.
Going backwards, the arrow doesn't work, so I go backwards. How? Help me out. There, that one, oops.
No, one before, one before.
Before, there we go.
No, the one before that, that's just got the dots of the, the regional centers. They call it the Linwood Regional Center.
Yes, so Linwood is named in at PSRC as a, just Linwood itself, as a medium-sized city, is an urban regional growth center named earlier on, just like Everett is a metro, Linwood is an urban.
Oh, okay, so they're not referring to this, this center designation that we're talking about around the light rail station?
I'm sorry, I probably went too fast. These are the five existing in Snohomish County. Linwood has been one for a while, Everett's been one forever because they're metro.
I was supposing the following slides with that. I thought that was coming down and zooming into a little more detail.
So, yeah, so that's what's currently there, currently in the map, and there's thirty of these through the, through the four county area, plus ten manufacturing centers. And now that. Okay, so light rail, now we're showing those two station areas at the two dotted circles. That third dotted circle is a provisional station for light rail, but that's firmly in, in the city of Everett.
So what's the orangish area? Is that the boundaries of the station area that they're proposing to designate?
That is the boundary of their regional center, which lines up pretty closely, as I understand it, with the light rail's community comprehensive plan action that Snohomish County took. If you read that, it says proposed regional center in the orange. Um, but I think that lines up pretty well with that same zoning that Snohomish County put together for the light rail communities area. Does that make it sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
And now what drives to go forward? There we go. So zoom in a little bit on our urban growth area. Remember, we're in the blue. It shows that it's on the edge there. That kinda light yellow line through the middle is I five to these orientations. So right now, it looks like a little bit bigger on the other side, but the point is they touch our area if we chose to annex, or they'll at least touch our Muga, it's something we should be concerned with. And the, the words there says the Mariner one falls in the Muga boundaries of Mill Creek and Everett, and the Ashway one falls between Mill Creek and Linwood. So those people we'll be working with will get to this, but a memorandum of understanding would be the ultimate thing we would do with those cities to say we would like to cooperate on these. I'm, I'm lost on random things to go forward here. Find an arrow, there we go. Okay, so Mariner, just a little bit more zooming in on that one. The, so this is coming from the PAC, is the Planning Advisory Group, that's part of SCT. They've done this work. Snohomish County's planning for that area is to increase activity units per acre by ninety-six percent. So that's a doubling of what it is today. So their new zoning is gonna double the density. Hence, that's proposed light rail community zone, light rail, remember, it's gonna come in twenty thirty-seven, at the earliest maybe a little bit later.
Twenty forty-one.
Twenty forty-one.
Is the official date now?
Is it now?
Yes.
It's, so just to hang on, hang on to twenty thirty-seven, but maybe twenty forty-one. But anyway, it's coming, it's coming, it really. And the point is, it's already served by the green line, the green line that goes through the green line bus rapid transit. The Ashway one, they're talking about two hundred and fifty percent increase. So a huge increase of density around Ashway. And if you think about it, there's not much there right now. It's pretty vacant. There's just a few apartments that have happened along that strip, but that, the intensity there is quite a bit. And again, that's right on the edge of our Muga. It's part of the overlap with Linwood. Um, again, it's proposed to be that, and it's got the orange line through it. And so really, what's, why does this mean to Mill Creek? Why do we care? And so remember, our comprehensive plan talked about concentrating growth in areas near places where we wanted to have growth and where we had investment to connect the transit already. So we've already, if you look at our density map there, that's one of our zoning maps. It shows where we put a lot of density along five twenty-seven, and we're talking about putting South Town Center. So this kinda lines up with the whole investment in transportation. And ultimately, more activity at those light rail stations, whether they're in Mill Creek or not, to be honest, is gonna be potential more developer interest or more activity to Mill Creek in general, more traffic. We'd like to control that traffic. We'd like to control the kinda growth. We'd like to have an influence on the growth, but it will bring developer interest and potential customers closer to Mill Creek. So a reminder, reminder for all of us, we're pretty close to this, but for the audience, if they haven't heard this before, the South Town Center again is really focused on how we put more people in that area. We've decided to put our growth in that one area, which is well-served by the two transit lines. And that, by concentrating it, you can justify the kinda infrastructure investments that enhance the connectivity and access, all the things we've talked about through, through our process. And over there is a reminder, the GGLO, I think, next meeting, I think we'll be talking about that, uh, kinda kicking off what we're gonna be doing with South Town Center. If we talk about potential annexation, these again are right in our area, so it strengthens our roles in regional planning investment decisions. To be honest, about three or four years ago, the planning for light rail communities and the planning by sound transit was attended by the communities that it touched. So was Everett got to go to the meetings, and Linwood got to go to the meetings, and Snohomish County got to go to the meetings. But even though they said, geez, wouldn't be great if Mill Creek had to tend, they made the decision that we were not at the meeting, at the table to discuss some of the sound transit discussions because we didn't currently touch that. So part of this hidden behind this is if we chose to annex, you would have a better seat at the table with the sound transit discussions because it would be your city as opposed to just your Muga. I think Snohomish County is doing a good job of the planning on our behalf. That's where we stay connected with them, but I think it's an opportunity. If we chose to annex, we'd have even more influence on those areas. And this is just a summary, the, the, the benefits of regional growth center designation for those two areas would be supporting our goal identified in our plan, but intensifying the growth of where it makes sense. Promote successful development of the South Town Center, again, more activity units around here, and unlocking potential for capital improvement projects, specifically roads. You know, the opportunity to ever do anything to hundred sixty-fourth, opportunity to do things at the intersection of hundred sixty-fourth and I five, inner opportunity to do something a hundred twenty-eighth and I five would be greatly enhanced at the competition down at PSRC for federal dollars if we had those designations, because right now, we're in line behind those other designations. So next steps, just so you know where we are, they've already had their Planning Advisory Committee. So Jeff, as a planning director, belongs to this Planning Advisory Connect, uh, activity. It's all the planning directors from all the cities, plus the county people, just like I'm in the ICC, is the Infrastructure Coordinating Committee, is the Public Works people that do this thing. They've met a couple times on a couple briefings there. They made a presentation last week to this steering committee, just to kinda have a briefing on it, and I understand it's gonna be an agenda item for them on June twenty-fifth. So I think is it Mayor Protem or Mayor that are, is doing? You were there. Okay, so anyway, I got the briefing, and I think, like, the sense I got from Jeff before he left town was that it was a new idea, not, didn't bother anybody. I don't think it's, it's got a lot of opposition, but I think there will be some competition to, uh, if you get designated as a regional center, you potentially are in the pool of favored people for transportation dollars, and so somebody who's not gonna get that is the people that would fight against it. So Pierce County in the, in the past has said, hey, make sure McCord Air Force Base gets all kinds of money because it's a big deal, and that it's not a regional center. There was a lot of debate about that back in the late twenty-ten, the twenty sixteen-seventeen when they were setting this up. Same thing could happen. That's why we think it's important to Snohomish County to go down there together and say this is important to have regional centers. But Mayor Protem, you, since you were at that meeting, you, wanna relate a couple things right here?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I was glad we were having this discussion tonight, because then, um, I didn't need to worry about everybody else finding out and bringing it up in my report tonight. Um, for me, I mean, this was really important, I think, even now for our discussion here, because I didn't feel like, when they gave the presentation to the, um, to the steering committee, that they did a good enough job explaining and selling why it's so important that we actually have those designations. Um, and, um, Mayor Fazelli was even confused, and so she was asking for more information and to get people, um, so she's gonna meet up with some people. But, um, so that concerned me, and I think the, I had talked to Jeff ahead of time before going to that, so that I knew what to expect. I think the really important thing is to sell this is to really drive home that we really need to be having those designations so that we can get those transportation dollars and those infrastructure dollars, because this growth is coming there, whether we have that designation or not, and we need to be able to put the infrastructure in, and those dollars are gonna be huge for being able to do that. So I think it's really important that we are, um, I guess, telling the story of why it's important, and also that we're making sure we have allies to vote for it, because, um, I'm concerned too that maybe higher up north, the, like Everett, won't want us to have it because they, they, it would take away some of their dollars. So, and it's really important since those areas have three jurisdictions, three jurisdictions jutting up against them, and the growth is gonna come in there. So we need to be able to plan for it and build for it.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for filling in the piece I didn't know from the meeting last week. Let me finish a couple slides here, then I think you guys may wanna have a discussion and, and talk about some more. Next step is the June twenty-fifth meeting. That would be the, a decision by the Steering Committee to advance this to County Council. County Council would have that briefing sometime in August. County Council would have to take an action to do, to make the application to PSRC, and the applications are due in September. This is a fairly new process, and they're revamping the process right now. I think they've also realized there's too many centers. A lot of these are historical. The fact that there's twenty-something in King County, and there's only five in Snohomish County, this kinda tells you something's going on here. Same, Pierce County feels the same way. But so that would be the first shot at it, and I think there's probably a good chance because of the sound transit aspect in the timeline, there was probably a good chance, but I think as Mayor Protem says, it's gonna be important that we're kind of aligned on that. So that's one reason to give you the briefing tonight, let you ask questions, think about it, and then give good direction for the Steering Committee action on the twenty-fifth, it looks like. Couple more slides. What does it cost us? It's the staff support for briefing, so Jeff would say he could do this. You know, it's, it's not a lot, a, not a heavy lift, because Snohomish County has done most of the lift on the planning they've already done through their comp plan process. We could take their light rail communities work. All statistics are there, all the numbers are there, not much work there. But what would be asked of from you would be a memorandum of understanding is probably the format would take. It'd be a memorandum, memorandum that would recognize that Mill Creek and Linwood think Ashway ought to be a regional growth center. Mill Creek and Everett think Mariner should be a regional growth center. And Jeff has talked to both those planning directors, got them to provisionally say that's a good idea. But there is this competition between us three and everybody else, potentially, or between Everett versus Mill Creek. I think it's gonna go pretty well. But that's, you know, things can change. There's some politics going on here, as you guys all know, that SCT politics is a little bit different than the, the, uh, planning commission, the planning directors talk about things. So with that, discussion time, as you wish, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions, comments? Councilmember Cavallari?
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Director Todd. Is, is, is all of this really only applicable to us if we annex towards I five? Is, is that the only way to get a seat at the table here, to use your words?
The way to get a seat at the table with sound transit for station planning at those areas is probably to actually touch those areas through annexation. But I think as Mayor Protem pointed out, and what I should convey here is that I think the influence, this memorandum of understanding, even if we don't annex there, the, 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 getting this designated as regional center is gonna help us get traffic problems solved, hundred sixty-fourth and I five, and particularly, wanna keep thinking about, get some more money there to fix that intersection, which is just a mess, would be, we'd be a lot better off as a region. In the past, we've stood up and said, we, Mill Creek will support Snohomish County with their application to the state to get some money for planning for fixing a hundred and sixty-fourth and I five, but that's just been a kind of a, we think it's a good idea. If we have this as a regional growth center, then they also can carry that that spear down to Puget Sound Regional Council, say, we are a regional growth center called Ashway. That gets you extra points when you go to compete for those federal dollars. That kinda makes sense?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think the idea of an MOU, uh, I'm not sure of the wording, but I kinda have an idea of, of what that would look like, but is to, um, would essentially allow us to be almost non-committal, if you will, but meanwhile committing to potential in the future.
Yeah.
So.
The process that Marysville and Arlington, it took a lot of years, and it was during this whole Puget Sound Vision twenty fifty generation, took a bunch of years, but the two of them together were persistent in saying, we have an opportunity to create some new industrial space up here that has a lot of jobs. And so that finally prevailed, but it took a bunch of years. I think this can happen faster this, this time because of the, the sound transit. Twenty thirty-seven or twenty forty-one is still gonna happen, so I think making that investment now, you can already see it by Bolero, somebody's building some more housing, stuff is gonna happen there, because developers know that.
I'm not sure I see a downside to support it. My concern would be it's a little bit like marking our territory, that if you wanna consider annexing out there and you don't support this, and then Linwood does, and then Linwood goes to annex, they're gonna decide to, well, Mill Creek didn't wanna do this over here. So I, I think to stay in the game, to keep that option open, if you guys decide the coming years you wanna look at annexing west, you almost need to support this.
That memorandum of understanding has not been drafted yet. I think that will come after SCT takes their action, but I think the, there's an opportunity for you to think about this week. Director Ryan will be back next week as far as we know. And he could help with, if Mayor Protem is gonna be the representative, you could kinda strategize how you're gonna go to that meeting uh, on the twenty-fifth, and make sure it gets past that gauntlet. Then I think the County Council, I think we would have a pretty good, pretty good time making that happen, but I think it's getting through SCT first, because a lot of cities, like you said, we're kind of under, didn't understand what this was. If you haven't been through one of these, you don't really understand the process and the importance of it, so I think it's up to us to kinda champion that. Mayor, uh, city manager.
Yeah, and one thing that when we discussed, we discussed this with the SCT, Jeff and I, we're, we're talking to the, uh, planners at local cities, and ST originally, SCT originally wanted to add provisions in the, in the MOU that would uh, more define our role as it relates to annexation, so they, they're actually pushing that pretty hard, but we actually had them pulled back, so there's no committal, um, in any part of any city or, or, or organization that's involved in this MOU.
Excellent, good. I didn't know that. Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Paddock?
Is, is there any engagement we should have with County Council, or, or Chair Mead, Councilmember, or anything like that, that would?
I don't think so at this point. I don't know, did you and Jeff talk about that? I think it's more getting Linwood on our side. Linwood's kinda non-committal in the first place. I think the plan director said yes, and some of their electeds weren't quite so sure. That's what I heard, that you may have heard more.
Mayor Protem may be able to speak to this, but I do meet with, uh, County Councilmember Mead on a quarterly basis, and, uh, as well as Brett Berg, and, uh, we do, we are discussing with them, uh, keeping them in loop with everything that's happening on the, on our side of things, and with PRC, PSRC and SCT. So they're aware of what's happening, and we're letting them potentially, you know, maybe make a decision on how they could support us going forward. So they're aware of it.
But no need to advocate for their advocacy?
Not at this point. I think it's, it's more the three cities that'd be involved in this versus the twenty is probably the tougher hurdle. I see Mayor Protem nodding her head. I think that's the, just, they're not, they're probably not opposed to it, but they don't see the benefit, and some of them don't understand.
Yeah, I thi- I think we need to lobby the cities that, um, that would be involved, especially the members in Linwood, and, um, and maybe even admins, because, um, I'm just thinking who would not, would, would not be against for sure. So yes, I think we should lobby our, um, our colleagues in the other cities, and then I would reach out to, I would say we should reach out to Councilmember Mead after the twenty-fifth, after, um, SAT does their part.
What's the opposition of the other cities?
I, I don't know yet. I'm just hearing things, so.
I mean, this is where the regi- regional cooperation can break down. I mean, there was a lot of support for the Marysville designation, even though there wasn't, you know, there's a county-wide general economic impact, but no specific impact to us, but we didn't stand in the way of their designation, and I'm not sure why they would look to stand in the way of this designation or oppose it in any way.
Yeah, they probably shouldn't, you know. Twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. Twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen is when this is happening. I was sitting down there and I would report to you guys from Puget Sound Regional Council. This was going on, Arlington, Marysville doing their thing and Canyon Park's gonna do their thing. And we went, okay, whatever, it wouldn't bother us. We didn't stand up against it. We didn't go and carry signs outside their councils to do it, but it's, I think it should be the same thing.
How does this relate to the station planning or does it?
I think it only relates to station planning in that we would get a seat at the table with sound transit. Because we would, but maybe get, so I shouldn't say get a seat, but get a better seat because we would have said we're part of a memorandum of understanding. And so instead of just Linwood being there, I think we could say, look, we're part of this MOU for Ashway. Let us participate at the same level as they do. Right now, because it's, because they already have a station, they are at the, at the table right now. Um, Everett, same thing is gonna be the big, big one to deal with. It, it wouldn't hurt, I guess, that's the point.
Other questions? So Director Ryan will be bringing us, or Mr. Ryan will be bringing us back to, bringing this back to us next, next meeting?
Yeah, I don't think there'll be any action required. I think it'd be after SCT, but if you had any ideas or questions or things, I think it'd be an opportunity to, to caucus on the tenth to get ready for the meeting on the twenty-fifth, cause the twenty-fifth is right after your council meeting on the twenty-fourth. Yeah, it'll be on Wednesday after the council meeting on the twenty-fourth. So you get an opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that brings us to our next presentation, item D, planning commission responsibilities and future developments. Mr. Horn.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council. So, uh, in preparation for the planning commission, um, appointments later tonight, I have a presentation about what the planning commission does. It's important that we'll have a majority of the planning commission will be all new as of, well, a majority, almost just a short shot majority, all new, um, after tonight. So the goal of this presentation is to understand what the roles, responsibilities of planning commission are. I'll be looking at, uh, over what they do, is I'm looking at projects and then a time for questions. All right. So first, a very high level, um, look at some of the things the planning commission does. Probably most important, they advise the city council on land use policies and planning initiatives. Um, they review and recommend updates to the comprehensive plan and development code. We'll have a looking at, take a look at that later on in the presentation. They evaluate proposed developments for consistency with city goals and to stick with the comprehensive plan. They conduct public hearings and gather community input and they support long-term growth, housing, sustainability efforts. So a brief look at the comprehensive plan, what is it? So it's required by the Growth Management Act as a long-term, uh, policy document. And it guides decisions on land use, housing, transportation and public services with the goal of promoting sustainable growth and, um, promoting community goals over the next twenty years. We are required to update the comprehensive plan every ten years to comply with the GMA and we most recently finished, uh, updating the comp plan last year. However, there's also an annual update, which we can do if we need to amend the comprehensive plan. We can only amend it once per year. And the comp plan or the planning commission has some responsibilities when it comes to the comprehensive plan. When there's a proposed amendment, um, the planning commission will conduct an initial assessment and recommend to the council whether the amendment should be, um, considered, uh, and studied. If the council decides that they want to proceed and, uh, study the amendment, planning commission will hold a public hearing to gather public feedback on the amendment and create a recommendation to council about whether it should be adopted or not. Uh, in the Mill Creek municipal code, there are five titles that are collectively referred to as the development code. And they cover the administration of the development code, buildings and construction, subdivisions, zoning and the environment. Just like with the, um, comprehensive plan or similar to the comprehensive plan, um, responsibilities. Planning commission holds public hearings to solicit, uh, public feedback and they generate a recommendation to council about whether proposed amendments to the development code should move forward. Planning commission has some additional responsibilities that they can, um, they can do. They can hold additional hearings, meetings, workshops or other events as necessary when they're reviewing legislative actions such as comprehensive plan amendments or, um, municipal code amendments. To gather feedback from the public or just to workshop various ideas. They can also initiate a comp plan or development code amendments if they have an idea in mind. Next up, we have a look at some upcoming projects the planning commission will be involved in. The big one, which we're all very excited about is the South Town Center Master Plan where we want to extend, um, the success of town center south into the, the South Town Center sub-area to create a mixed-use, um, um, mixed-use district that is walkable, has housing and, um, encourage economic growth. And we see that as playing a key role in transforming, um, the area into a, a great destination and real centerpiece, centerpiece of the city. Another project we have on our agenda is a critical areas update. We are reviewing our critical areas regulations entitled eighteen of the Mill Creek municipal code to ensure that they are, um, in line with the best available science. And we are working with a consultant to, um, assist us with that and we will be done by the end of the year. Additionally, um, this fall, we will be doing an annual code update where we will review all of our development regulations and our processes for approving, um, permits and decision-making. And the goal is to make lots of small changes, not major policy changes, but just small incremental updates to help make sure everything flows smoothly. The future projects include the DRCC project, which will be another big project. Um, we also have some potential land use and zoning updates. Um, we will also be creating a, uh, parks, recreation, open space, uh, plan. And we also need to update our sign regulations. All right. Any questions?
Questions?
All right.
Just Councilmember Kevlerie?
How come there's so many openings in the planning commission?
Good question. Um, we had, um, co-members not, their, their terms expired. We had another commissioner who, um, moved out of the city, so he had to resign.
I saw there was like five, right? Four?
Yeah, four. Yeah, three new members.
Uh, that's substantial.
Councilmember Duque?
I was gonna add, from my understanding, they, um, the ones who, who left who'd been doing it forever felt like they completed their, you know, they worked on this great project and they felt like it was a completion and they were happy to like leave it. But that, but that was it. They've been on it for a long time and they felt like they, they did a good job on the project and were happy to go on.
All right, thank you.
If there's no other questions, you can just stay up there and go into your next presentation on the old business, the ordinance related to middle housing compliance municipal code updates. And I don't know, there's a need to go through your entire staff report again this week. Um, so you can do an abbreviated version if you'd like for Councilmember Kevlerie's benefit.
Sure.
So ju- just maybe in the, to save some time, I did review the last meeting and watched the whole meeting, so, so I'm good there.
Okay. In that case, I will skip ahead to, um, I just wanna cover, well, skip a little further. Okay, um, the big question last meeting was about Unilots subdivision and how the new Senate Bill five-five-five-nine um, works with that. Um, so we have a couple of options. Just to recap, uh, Senate Bill fifty-eight, fifty-eight.
Fifty-two, fifty-eight.
Sorry, fifty-two, fifty-eight. I have a typo there.
Yeah.
Um, requires cities to implement Unilots subdivision, but they did not, it did not tell cities how to do it. So, um, in drafting the amendments, I looked at some guidance from Commerce and what other cities have done. And once Senate Bill fifty-five, fifty-nine was passed, um, there are some small changes between what they require and what, uh, I wrote. However, they're pretty similar. So, um, my recommendation would be to pass amendments as is and just do some minor tweaks, um, to fully comply with fifty-five, fifty-nine during our annual code update in fall. Um, but if council doesn't want to do that, we could also just pull it out and do it as a separate, separate item.
I'm the one who brought up that issue and I'm fine with that approach. Cause I don't think it's gonna take much to bring us into compliance with fifty, fifty-five, fifty-nine. So let's, I would suggest we move forward to the ordinance unless people have questions or concerns about it and then come back and clean it up. Councilmember Ellison?
Yeah, I think you mentioned last week that you had gone back and forth with, was it with the Commerce Department? And they felt like what you had was sufficient for now?
Yeah, they reviewed the amendments and they thought it was sufficient for now. They didn't, well, they didn't, they didn't fully review the Unilots subdivision because it hadn't been passed yet by the legislature. Um, but the rest of it, they gave themselves up on.
I don't think Commerce has issued guidance on Unilots subdivisions based on fifty-five, fifty-nine yet. Any other questions?
I have a question, Mayor.
Councilmember Kevlerie?
So the boarding house language, um, why, why were we including that again?
Um, in uh, can I get that position back up? So there is, uh, the city passed a, um, a bill amending or about co-living housing. Um, and they refer to, uh, we refer to co-living housing in our code as boarding houses. Um, but they changed the definition in the RCW and so Commerce said they wanted us to align our definition with, uh, the definition then in the RCW.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Motion? Councilmember Duque?
I had it and then it, and then it went away. It's, but it's just, uh, to move to amend the Mill Creek municipal code to comply with state housing. Yep, that's the one I have. Regulations in HB one-zero-four-two, HB one-one-zero, HB thirteen-thirty-seven, HB nineteen-ninety-eight and SB fifty-two, fifty-eight and establishing an effective date.
Second?
Is there any discussion? Councilmember Kevlerie?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first, let me say thanks to the council. Uh, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem for kicking this out a week and giving me an opportunity to speak on it when you could have very easily voted on it last week. So I definitely appreciate that. As you know, you don't have to have gone to detective school to know how I feel about these bills, uh, these massive changes that, that the state is implementing on the cities. Our city is, is really known for its, um, unique diversity, living styles from town center to east gateway to, from Silver Crest to the Buffalo Farm. We have a very eclectic variety of housing types throughout the city. But I think we're facing a more serious challenge and that's the continued assault on the city's rights to govern itself, the city's right to decide its own future. I think everyone up here has been elected to office and, and is a representative of the residents in this community. But we continue to see moves by the state to usurp local authority. For instance, they're forcing us to create laws and ordinances we otherwise would not. The problem is, is that when a lot of this is used so broadly, it becomes counterintuitive to the wants and needs of the community it serves. It's also a coercive method to substitute state priorities for local policymaking. The state has taken preeminence and used it as a punitive measure at this point to limit local authority, which severely damages a city our size that really runs on the margins. These bills undermine local authority and mandate massive population growth and housing density in a city that probably can't sustain it. Now, in the past, cities under twenty-five thousand would be exempt from the process, but they've created so many caveats in the language that were arm-twisted into acquiescence. This forces cities like us to absorb the recoil of really the bad policymaking of cities around us. I think if the citizens of Mill Creek wanted more apartments, higher density and low residential neighborhoods, it should be left to this body to decide, not the state. I think it's up to legislative bodies to push back. I've talked to some other cities and, and they're all scratching their heads doing the same thing. What do we do here? Once we ring this bell, once we change the code, we can and ring it. I'm happy to be the first city to push back and maybe attempt legal action. My proposal is to show capacity and not make the court, the amendments and code changes. And just remember, like I said, if we adopt this, we lose the right to contest it. Um, as always, as I've always said, I'll be voting no. Thank you.
I wasn't gonna say anything, but now I will. Let's not overstate what this is gonna do to Mill Creek. Um, I share the concerns about local control, but we exercise that control with our comp plan. We chose unanimously to put the bulk of our density in the South Town Center area. We chose to increase that density. The remainder of the city, I think we're gonna see very little impact, given primarily the action that the Mill Creek Community Association took to amend their CCNRs before the effective date of eleven-ten. So the bulk of our single-family neighborhoods will not be affected by this bill. And when it comes to adding things like ADUs, let's remember our code has allowed those in our city for fifteen-plus years. And I don't know the specific numbers, but I've heard we've had something like twelve approved or applied for over the years. So I generally share the concerns about maintaining our local control, but I don't think we're gonna see the end of Mill Creek as a result of adopting this bill. So I'll be supporting it. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss? Sorry, Councilmember Paddock.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I, I think this does a really good job of addressing the code changes that the state is, is asked for, is mandating while ensuring that we do our best to keep the community of single-family homes as is for as long as possible. I, I think it's, that's the headline. Good balance.
And, and one other point to make is I think, Justin, you said this at the last, one of the last presentations. This ordinance reflects the minimum we are required to do under eleven-ten. Many cities are doing more than they're required to do under eleven-ten, depending on what tier they are. So we chose to put forward an ordinance that does the minimum necessary for some of the concerns, reasons that Councilmember Kevlerie raised. Councilmembers Decker.
And just so I can clarify the, the concerns that Councilmember Kevlerie brought up, it's primarily that we are giving up our control over guidelines for, for the future. Is that correct? Okay. But is there any objection to the proposed guidelines that are articulated here?
Well, if you're asking me to go over it, there, there's a lot of concerns where the language that we have baked in says, refer to RCW. And for example, um, just give you one example, one of the bullets on eleven-ten says, uh, you must establish anti-displacement policies. Can anybody here tell me what that is? That's what I mean. And this is, and I mean, I've got several pages highlighted with ambiguities and, and I'm not gonna get into all of them. It's up to others to do their homework, but i- i- it's just, I mean, I think it's left for this body to decide and I think the state has overreached, um, mandating all the cities to grow and we're not all the same. You know, we've been, we've been great stewards of our tax dollars and, and we've saved a little bit here and there and we're, I think we're the envy of the community around us. And, and I think in the end, to wrap this up, we'll be forced to absorb the other messes.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? Motion passes six-one-zero. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, it brings us Okay, it brings us to new business, our planning commission appointments for the vacancies. I'm going to turn this over to Councilmember Paddock, who I believe was on the interview committee.
Interview committee was myself, Mayor Pro Tem, and Councilmember Steckler. We had six really terrific candidates, and I think we were all impressed by the experience and the enthusiasm of all six of those. We had a group that was, I think, diverse, I think, we thought diverse in perspectives and experience and residency tenure, which was good to see. I I don't recall, again, I'm the newest member here on this far right end. But I don't recall ever having six folks come out for the planning commission, at least in my tenure. We have a great, great group of four that are going to take the, that we're going to put in place here to take us through the work that city planner Orin had described us going through here in his last presentation.
Do you want to make a motion to appoint?
Any questions or? Okay.
Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Please do.
So a motion to reappoint Jose Barunda to the Planning Commission for a three-year term, ending May thirty-one, twenty-twenty-eight. Appoint Mercedes Hutton and Gabriel O to the Planning Commission for three-year terms, ending May thirty-one, twenty-twenty-eight, and appoint Gregory Neft to fill the resigning member Matthew Geiger's unexpired three-year term, May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously. Okay, we have no proposed new initiatives on the agenda, no study sessions and no consent agenda, which brings us to a report. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I think in front of you probably have a copy of a certificate that was awarded to our finance department. At first, I'd talk a little bit about kind of what GFOA is before I get into the actual certificate and then I could tell you what what I enjoy not doing, I haven't been, I haven't, what I enjoy not doing in this budgeting. There's, I spent a number of years working in budgets and developing budgets for another local agency. And I could tell you, it's a heavy lift. A lot of balance between precision detail on a strategy side, working with departments to align, for example, with our long-term vision. And it's a lot of work keeping things accurate as well as forecasting, you know, current by aim and and subsequent periods. Our finance department has, as you know, put forward to council a lot of ample of budgets that you've probably experienced and that have been top-notch. And I think the finance department is setting a standard across the city in terms of kind of where we want to be across the board. So GFOA is 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 an acronym for the Government Finance Officers Association. And I'm going to read a little bit about it because I can't remember everything here. A professional organization established in nineteen oh six. It serves public finance professionals throughout the US and Canada by promoting excellence in public finance and offering best practices, training, and resources to improve government plans, financial management. There's three key objectives, promoting transparency and accountability. The second is improving financial reporting standards, enhancing professional competency. Every year, if you're, if you have, if you're preparing annual if you're every year, if you're preparing annual budgets or every two years, biennial organizations are required to put in application for this. It's only benefit to the organizations because if you do get an award, there is significant recognition. I think there's a lot of value add in terms of winning an award like this. It's the highest form of recognition in governmental budgeting and represents a significant achievement. It encourages and recognizes government for producing budget documents of the highest quality that meet criteria designed to promote accountability and transparency. So again, it gives you an idea of kind of the significance of of this in terms of Mill Creek and kind of where we stand financially. So I'd like to congratulate Ermina, her staff, the way, Annie, Jody Gunderson, and Dana Volk. They keep putting forward quality work. Very proud of it. And I think it's something now the rest of departments have to live up to and meet up to those standards. So it's a, it's a good standard to 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 be competing against internally. So
Just give her a hand.
Give her a hand.
Good job.
One more report is our finance report by our one and only. Thank you.
Better be good.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, council members. And your packets tonight are the financial reports for the period ending April thirty of twenty twenty-four. It represents about seventeen percent of our activity for the biannual. The general fund revenues and expenditures are both under the benchmark. The general fund revenue of three million is below the or it's less than our expenditures by about one point four million. That's a factor of the timing of our property tax revenues as well as the types or diversification of our revenues as well. For our revenues, the sales tax have remained flat. It's only increased our collection about a one percent year over year. The good, good thing to note, though, even if we have not gotten a lot of gains from sales tax, some of our charges for services have improved, specifically the recreation fees, our passport revenues have also increased. In fact, for the four-month period, we have processed sixty-two hundred applications for passport, which is eleven hundred more than what we did last year. Also, the recreation and sponsorships have increased. But that's a factor of the seasonal coming into summer. So we've collected some of those recreation fees. We've also seen increases in fines and penalties, which is consistent with the activity that Chief White reported in their police department for quarter one of twenty twenty-five, wherein they said that their specifically for traffic contacts that their activities increased by sixty percent. And we're seeing those same revenue increases in our fines and penalties. Through for the period, our salary and employee benefits, which makes up approximately sixty-six percent of our expenses are about four months, represents four months of expenditures, which and it represents maybe about ninety-eight percent of the full-time people of 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 all the positions are fully filled except for two. We're also looking at our monitoring expenses on the police side because, as you know, with increased in activities, we're also going to see increases in some of the expenditures for police, particularly jail, jail costs, prosecution and public defense. So we are watching those closely. And lastly, our REIT, our REIT revenues, we've collected nineteen percent of the budget. For just the month of April, we collected about a hundred and forty-four thousand more than what we did in twenty twenty-four. That concludes my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Any questions? Great report. Okay, any other reports, any other staff reports?
No other reports, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, the only, I just got two quick things. I'll be in DC next week. So if I'm unable to join remotely, Mayor Pro Tem will be taking control of the meeting. And then the other item, Councilmember Duque may be interested in this. I've noticed that the traffic on thirty-fifth, South is one thirty-second at the four thirty to five thirty timeframe gets ridiculously bad. So I suggested he look at the, look into the timing of that light that's controlled by Washot to see what, if anything, could possibly be done about it. So Mayor Pro Tem, any reports?
Um, thank you, Mayor. As we mentioned before, I had the SCT meeting last week. And the main highlights were the report that we discussed. And also, we had a round table of people that were involved in the housing industry and kind of went through and answered a bunch of questions for everyone. And it was really insightful and helpful with the things that they're looking for, things that they need, what the housing market's looking like. And so it was it was really helpful for us for that. And then I also want to give a great shout out to our wonderful crew because I have been taking cord to school and back in the middle of the tree cutting. And it has been very efficient and they keep the line going and I haven't had to wait very long at all. And thank you to the the police staff who's been out there helping as well. And I've gotten through nice and quickly every single time. So thank you for all your hard work.
Councilmember Cavallari, your report?
Thanks, Mayor. I I just want to comment on this again for Ermina and her team, this certificate. You don't need a long memory to go back to see when auditors were crawling all over here and we were facing fines and penalties and and late fees and whatever other fees you can tack on top. And to go from there to here in that short amount of time is is really, really quite remarkable. And when I, when I put it all together after watching the last meeting on Zoom, on YouTube, the city planners' presentation for DRCC, I thought was an, was an excellent job too. And I and I just was sitting there, or sitting here now, as you gave me this, realizing what a great team that we've assembled here, what a great team of professionals. All of you are and you do a great job day in and day out. It it often goes unnoticed, but but I'm glad that the GFOA has has recognized you in this case. But if we don't always say it, we mean it. And thank all of you for what you do.
Councilmember Steckler?
Darn. Councilmember Cavallari stole a lot of my thunder. It's exactly what I was going to bring up. I just wanted to add my personal thanks. After eight years on the council, I have been actively involved with the finance side of our business the entire time. I I'm always very concerned and interested in what's going on. I have seen such significant improvement over the number of the last five years, but getting the chance to work with you and your team, Ermina, on the finance committee, is a pleasure to see how accurate and concerned and and yet open you are with with ma- maintaining incredible responsibility for the citizens' funds. These are, we're all guests here. And you definitely are, I take it very seriously. So my personal congratulations on this. I love it when good people get recognized. I just love that. And you are a very good person. So congratulations.
Councilmember Ellison?
I don't have any reports. Thanks.
Councilmember Duque?
A big thank you to Mayor Pro Tem Vignal, who will be attending this week's Parks and Recreation Board meeting for me. I really appreciate it. And on Thursday, I'll be going to a design review board meeting. It's been some time and I'm very excited to to see that crew. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Paddock?
Like the lilt in your voice as you called that out. Sunday morning, our town center, usually a bit quiet and sleepy at seven AM, is going to be full of excited, joyful families cheering on their elementary age children, primarily girls. They'll be running a Celebration Five K. It's the capstone of nine months of mostly elementary school kids training while learning teamwork, resilience and community. It's really an awesome, awesome event. We'll also have, I believe, all three legislators, state legislators there. It's an opportunity to engage and some chamber leaders as well. So it should be a great, it should be a great event and something the city really needs and it takes a lot or gets a lot out of and really excited to have them here. Excuse me, and a runner from this dais will be in that Five K to our far left, your right.
Okay, it brings us to audience communication. Anyone like to address the council? Seeing no one in I'm not seeing any members of the public online. So we have no executive session this evening and nothing further on our agenda. So at seven oh three PM, we will be adjourned until next time.